Good evening, it is six thirty-seven on Monday, March fifth, two thousand eighteen, and we're gonna call the school committee.
Meeting to order. Our first item is our consent agenda, which includes our minutes from February twelfth and twenty-sixth. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. So, I apologize because my connection is a little slow, but I had a couple of suggestions on... If I can get to it. Yes. Thank you very much.
You can skip it. My secretary, my secretary. My secretary to the secretary.
The, a couple of questions, and you know, I may be misremembering some of these things. A self-care proposal, was that something, was that what Deanne presented?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure that it is something that is gonna collaborate, she may wanna add that she was involved in that and collaborated with Kate, Kathy?
Kate.
Kate.
Did you get that, Kathy?
The MSBA statement of interest for accelerated repair?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we are, this is great, we're giving the information, but at this time, did we know that we were going to the capital improvement? Should we add that here so that, you know, it doesn't come across as... Uh, the Chartwells discussion? It's great capture of what was said, but I think because this becomes a record of our conversation, we should add that we, um, we'll let them know that we were not really happy with the fact that there are continuing deficits to our, uh, school lunch budget. As for solutions or suggestions, there was a conversation around some of the variables that were used in projecting the budget, which apparently did not include enrollment, which was a concern for the school committee. If we can make a note of that in case, you know, the public would like to go back and look at, look at that. On the other one, I don't think I had anything. I think the other one was, was fine. That's all. So, since it's a consent agenda, are we then saying as amended?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Edits? Okay. So, um, with those amendments, all in favor to approve the consent agenda as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Visitor's comments? We have two visitors. All right. And it's great, you know, it's hundred percent participation.
[laughing]
All right. Robin, you are first.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, that as President of the Union and the Vice President of the Union, we were interviewed today, and it was, um, a very good interview, I thought, with the questions, and, um, we were told that we had a positive outlook on the administration. And I just want you to know, we do. I mean, things may not be going the way we want them to go, but we do have faith and are learning to build the trust in the administration, which we didn't have before.
Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
Thanks for sharing that. Greg?
Hi.
Hi.
Well, I have a few things, but they're pretty short, I think. One is, I just returned from the All-State Music Education Conference on the Seaport in Boston, and didn't get flooded too much. But it was a great opportunity to go out and share, I didn't do a session this year, but shared quite a bit what I'm trying to do with technology in the, particularly in the instrumental and vocal music program. And there was a lot of interest from the corporations that, of which the software and such that I use, about what we're doing here in Granby. I'm excited to see that. So, I thought I'd share that one little piece with you.
Thank you.
Also, I know that cards were already sent around, but wanted to make sure that you all knew about our upcoming school musical, Haphazardly Ever After, which is a fractured fairy tale, very family-friendly, fun little twists on, not even traditional fairy tales, but just the idea of creation of a fairy tale. So, it's coming up on March fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, and there will be a seven o'clock show all three nights. And on Saturday, the seventeenth, we're also doing a two o'clock show. There will not be a Sunday show this time because it's the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and we wanted, but we wanted to have the students have a chance to do four shows again. So, information's on the school website there, but you have to go to the district website under Four Families to Granby Music to find that, but you'll see some other advertisements going around. And we're really excited about our tenth annual Men Who Cook Dinner, which, as you mentioned before, Emery, is this year, men versus women who cook. And it's Saturday, March twenty-fourth, at five o'clock here in the gym, and it's unbelievable to think that it's been ten years that this has been going on. I brought the idea here my very first year, two thousand four, and Tammy Bevo heard about it in, on a bus trip, and she said, "We have to do that someday." So, here we are in the tenth year of doing that, and if I had to guess, I don't think we've really detailed it on track of the monies funded, but we've probably raised about thirty thousand dollars for the performance arts here in the schools, just through that one activity. And it's through the Music Parents Association, so I wanted also to thank them for everything that they do, to join in partnership with us as the schools and the students and myself. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And echoing that, absolutely, many thanks to Music Parents Association. These are great events. I guess, we didn't even know whether or not it was gonna get the same interest, but Men Who Cook turned into a community event. I mean, it's not just folks going to fundraise or have a good meal, which, you know, is true in both cases, but also it's a community event. Everybody comes together, and they have a nice evening together, and listen to live music in the process, so, so thank you.
And that was one last piece I should've made my notes, was, one of the things we're trying to do in the high school program is give our students more opportunities to explore solo literature. So, in our most recent concert, two of our students performed, but I also encourage them to think about possibly playing before our school committee meeting, as people are coming in, library events, other, other events that are happening.
Yeah.
So, if people have a request, I can't guarantee that the students will be available or to do so, but I'd like to make that available to them and show them that music's lifelong. It doesn't end in twelfth grade, or when the scheduling conflict comes up, or whatever it happens to be, that they continue to share their skills, so.
Absolutely. That's a great idea.
On that note, there is a farm-to-table dinner that Evelyn Hatch is organizing. I'm on the organizing committee, and we're looking for someone to play guitar during the dinner. It's on a Wednesday evening.
That's right.
Right before, no, right before Charter Day.
Yeah, I think that's part of the, part of the...
Yeah, it's part of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth. It's honoring agricultural history of the town. The tickets are like forty bucks, there's only gonna be a hundred tickets, and it's at the Church of Christ. So...
Oh, we'll talk more.
All right. That'd be perfect.
I was also reminded that regardless of where the future performances are, musicals or theatrical performances, this is gonna be the last time folks can watch a performance in the old cafeteria, right? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
No?
Whoa.
But it's gonna be all renovated?
No, it was renovated last summer.
Oh, it was?
It is.
Okay, so it's already new? All right.
We've already had a show on the new...
Ah, so...
Sorry.
That, that, that takes away my little bubble.
Yeah. First.
All right, so come, come see the new cafeteria.
First musical.
Yes, first musical in the new cafeteria. That's great. Thank you both very much. Appreciate it. Okay, so moving on to new business, school chores?
Yes, so you have in your folder a memo which outlines the requests for opening school choice seats in each of the grade levels. It's very similar to what we presented last year. We are, um, almost at capacity in grades four, three, four, five, and six, so you will notice not many seats open there, but we do have larger potentials in kindergarten in grade one and grade two. Again, the yellow lines represent if we were to open that number of seats, we would need to add a teacher.
Okay.
And just so for clarity for the, those folks who are listening, in kindergarten, we are recommending eight seats to be opened with a projected enrollment of forty students, which would bring the classroom total, I'm sorry, the class size total up to forty-eight, and with the third teacher would keep class size at sixteen. In grade one, we're recommending eight openings. There currently are three classrooms. The projected enrollment in grade one is forty-three. With the additional eight seats, it would be fifty-one, which would keep class size at seventeen, so we have room there. In grade two, we're recommending nine seats. There are currently three classes in grade two. The current enrollment, or projected enrollment, is forty-five students, with the extra seats, that would bring the total up to fifty-four, which would mean eighteen students per classroom. In grade three, we would recommend only two openings. There are currently two classrooms. The extra third grade teacher is a request in the budget for FY nineteen, so the projected enrollment for that grade is already at fifty-two. With the extra two students, that would be fifty-four, which would bring class size to eighteen. In grades four through six, very small number of openings available, three in grade four, one in grade five, and one in grade six. And with those openings, each of the class sizes would go to twenty-four students per And at Granby Junior Senior High School, we are recommending eight students, eight seats be opened in grade seven, seven in grade eight, three in grade nine. We would have the capacity for sixteen in grades ten and eleven, and we typically do not accept school choice for grade twelve, except for some extenuating circumstances. That would bring the class sizes up to sixty-five, um, in grade seven, sixty-five in grade eight, and then seventy-two in grade nine, seventy in grade ten, and seventy in grade eleven. Currently, we have twelve, we have ten students in grade twelve who will be graduating, who have used school choice with us, and so we do need to replace those in order for school choice to continue to be revenue-neutral. So, we do need those ten students to be added. And the potential revenue, if we were to fill every single school choice opening that we had, would be four hundred and ten thousand dollars, so.
Okay.
All right, my question is, the third grade teacher, you have a highlighted yellow...
Yes.
But there's already a request for that.
That is in the budget, right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, even though it's highlighted yellow, you already have that third teacher already...
It's in the budget, right. So, the kindergarten position is very much as it was last year. At the end of the budget cycle, we did decide not to open up the seats in kindergarten, even though we had six school choice applications. We are already at eight. We are calling to see if those are confirmed. If the seats do open, are, would they be interested in attending? So, it's again, it's a decision, I think, that, you know, we're up against, which is, we would need a teacher to open up that number of slots. But one of the things that we do like, when we have kindergarten registration with school choices, they're able to enter our school district very young, and so they're learning our routines and procedures, they develop their peer group, they become well-acclimated at a very young age to our expectations, so, and they typically stay with us.
I thought, I thought this year that that was a tough grade, so I was kind of expecting first grade to be tighter, I guess, was my other observation.
To be what?
A little bit tighter. Like, I thought that this year, that, not the first grade class, but when before that was, was already pretty full. And then the first grade was gonna be, have large classes also, already, but it doesn't look that way here. I guess that's my observation.
Right. They would have large class sizes if they didn't already have three, three classrooms, but they already have three classrooms, so that allows us a little bit more flexibility in opening up more seats. So, when we look at, for example, kindergarten through grade two, through grade three, that does allow us a flexibility if we have enrollment, and resident enrollment comes in, so just wanted to point that out.
So, can you help me understand again? The seven through eleven?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're saying that projected enrollment is sixty-five, for instance, for seventh grade, and then...
I apologize, I neglected to eliminate that column, so the, the furthest column, to get projected enrollment, you just have to go back and take the school choice number off. So, current enrollment for grade seven would be...
Okay, so those are inclusive of school choice?
Exactly. And I, I had started to put it in the wrong column.
Okay.
Desi was here, and, you know, it's one of those things that you start, and then you go back to, and you're like, "Oh, forgot to take that column out."
And when you, the, the ten that you talked about, who are part of our senior class?
Yes.
They are added in the overall total? That you're, that we're hoping to?
No.
Get in?
Nope.
Should they be?
No, because they're leaving. So, in twelfth, our twelfth, our current senior class has twelve, has ten school choice students that will be graduating.
Yeah.
So, they're, so, we have to, in order to continue to receive revenue on the school choice, we need to replace those ten or lose fifty thousand in revenue, because those ten students are graduating.
Okay. Any questions on school choice?
Hope.
Okay. All right, thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
And, and do we have to vote or anything on this, or...
Um, I don't think so. I think that they're open, um...
Last time, when we did the eight, ninety-six, I think we voted for that one, to approve it.
Yeah. Did we vote, um, and, um, so, part of my concern would be kindergarten, if we're not gonna get the teacher, then I would not be able to open up the seats.
Yeah, it's not really to open it, it's just to give allowance up to that number that you're recommending.
Okay.
It may or may not be warranted, but you probably don't wanna miss the opportunity and wait till...
Right, exactly. And then, um, also, whether we wanted to continue pursuing marketing for that and the district. So, I did reach out to some local, um, marketing, actually, the person that does our website design was Rediker, so they're gonna get back to me with their proposal.
Okay. All right. So, is there a motion to approve the additional school choice seats as recommended by our superintendent?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Desi, targeted district review.
Yes, so...
So, they're coming, is that...
They're coming, yes! They're here. We have a lovely team, uh...
They were very nice.
Very nice people.
Yeah.
Yes. They are certainly well-versed, well-knowledgeable, and have a real breadth of experience, and so there are five standards that we could be assessed in. This is a targeted review, so we have three. So, we have leaders, leadership and governance, human resources and professional development, and then fiscal management, fiscal and asset management. So, those are the three that they are here looking at. They chose those based on our self-assessment, so the administrative team got together, and they asked questions on each of the standards, and we answer them, and then we provide evidence that they've asked for, or that we think supports why we're saying what we're saying about the district in a self-assessment. And they take all of that, and then they come back and share with us that they're doing the targeted review in those three standards. They have arrived, they are here, they will be here tomorrow, and perhaps during the snow day. They have interviewed the leadership team, the superintendent, the principals separately, the business manager separately, the union leadership. They will be conducting interviews with school committee, they already have. We have reached out to the town manager, the select board, and they have participants who will be coming. Finance committee is unable to attend, but we're trying to arrange a phone meeting, so that at least they can, finance committee can share their perspectives on work under fiscal and asset management. It's really important that we get the community's every side of the story here in Granby. They will make recommendations for us, so the report is detailed. They can't tell us to spend money or how to spend money, but they can tell us, make recommendations for us of things that we're doing really well and things that we can improve in. So, we're looking forward to that. It should come in about eight to twelve weeks, once the review is complete. And they're interviewing students, and they're observing in classrooms as well. And so, they do also teacher-focused groups, so every group is really covered. So, it's a real broad review, and it, we got chosen randomly. So, by law, the state has to do reviews of level one and two districts, and all level three, four, and five districts. So, they randomly choose level one and two districts.
Can you tell us what level we are?
Two.
Uh, what does one and two mean?
Um, basically, one and two are proficient. Two is usually indicative of a subgroup population that may not be performing in student achievement into comparison, and may not be making improvements to the degree that the state would like to see.
And there are only so many schools that are one, correct?
Yes.
So...
Very difficult to become a level one district.
Yeah. I'm just asking that because, you know, it's, it's good to remind ourselves that by different criteria, we are, we are found to be a, a school district that is proficient, that is at level two.
Yes, and, and actually, that whole system is changing, so the levels are changing, and we're awaiting that next, next generation accountability system, so...
That's great.
Yeah.
Does it require a computer program, or...
I don't know. [laughing] I think that they should award points based on the make-do aspect that... Yes. Small schools have to, 'cause I think that it's really easy to make it to number one when you've got millions in the bank, and you can hire the cream of the crop, and you get this, you know, all, not that we don't have the cream of the crop, but we have, we, our teachers hanging in there with us. Come on! Just on our can-do-it attitude, let's get some bonus points in here.
Yeah, I think they're gonna announce that the foundation budget is changing, the formula. I asked them if they're, they were gonna do it.
Oh, God.
Of course, they laughed, but...
Yeah.
They were very nice, very, our conversation was very nice, I enjoyed it. Bids?
Yes, um, we are going out to bid, TMS and Chartwells both. I'm working with David on our business office management bid, and Mark is working on the Chartwells bid. And we actually have interest in the lunch program, so that was interesting, 'cause that hasn't happened in quite a while, so we're interested to see what the bids come in with.
Yeah.
Definitely want them in kitchen.
Yeah, right?
Yeah. That's good. So, um, I'm, you know, since Mark is involved, I'm assuming we let TMS know about this, because I think there's a clause that we have to let...
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we know when we're gonna get the bids back?
Um, no, but Mark is due here on the nineteenth, and so he's aware he's gonna bring all that information.
Okay. Who is in charge of these bids?
So, David is in charge of the business office management bid. He, he also did that bid last year for us, and then Chartwells, TMS is in charge of that bid.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
A little bit different than this, so can we get Chartwells in here again?
Yes.
Relatively soon?
Yeah.
Like, I think, based on what we heard the last time, they should be here like almost once a month, right?
Yeah, we asked them to be here every other month, but we did, only saw them for the first time...
Yeah.
This last time, so it would be great, I agree with you.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Anything else? Good. Okay, go, moving on to old business, strategic plan and review.
Um, so, we had a wonderful meeting of the strategic planning committee. Very excited, we introduced the first draft, received feedback, revised it. The administrative team is going to sit down and work on two of the main components that are left, which are the measurable outcomes and the, um, measurable outcomes and the timeline associated with tasks. So, we're hopeful to do that work in the next few weeks, and then bring that back and have a document ready to present to school committee. One of the interesting things about Desi being here with the targeted review is that they gave us a wonderful packet, almost book, if you will, of all of the data that you can get in Desi, and some of the charts I've shared with you through budget and comparisons. It's all for us, so measurable outcomes are embedded in there. So, I'm excited to work with the team to go through those and align what the objectives are from the task force with measurable outcomes that we can compare over time.
So, not directly related to this, but I, because communication is a big part of our conversation here, and in the context of the strategic plan, um, do we know what parts, do we know what kind of efforts we can involve volunteer work in? So, if we wanted to ask someone to, I'm just gonna make this up, to write a, a letter for us, to design something for a website for us, take pictures for us, or something like that, is, are, do we know what restrictions do we have for a variety of reasons? Could be, you know, confidentiality reasons, privacy reasons, whatever it is, I, I don't know, but I'm just throwing it out there to find out what part of that type of work we can engage interested individuals in, and say, "Hey, if you're interested, since, you know, your interests and your skills align with it..."
Right.
"...come on over and let's just, you know, see what we can do together." Do we have an opportunity like that?
I think so. I think once we outline the tasks and the timeline and the strategic plan, particularly around the communication plan, I think that's when we can reach out and ask for the volunteers. We already have a wonderful set of volunteers, whether they're the parent committees or parent groups that support music or GAA. They're constantly feeding us photographs and blurbs and, but a more formal approach, where we maybe have a contact person, and they're, you know, helping us generate a newsletter that gets out to the community. I think those are areas that we can certainly expand into, because, you know, we can communicate through Connect Ed with an email and send out a newsletter or a webpage, but the idea and the objective really is to communicate to the entire community. So, how do we do that? And I think that's where, you know, if we had a group of people that that was their commitment and had the skill set, then we could work with that group.
I think I saw it on at least one school website. They had a section that said volunteer opportunities.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, you know, people who are interested, they just...
Yeah.
Go to whomever, I don't know, maybe it's the superintendent or somebody else, and say, "Hey, you know what? I'm interested in this because I know it, because I have an interest, because I would like to give it a shot."
Yeah.
Uh, I just am not sure about the restrictions around some of these volunteer activities, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I think, you know, student data, you know, professional data, you know, those things would be confidential, but in terms of communicating out events and, you know, those kinds of things, I don't have any issue with, and we actually have a retired teacher who's coming on board and doing professional development with us, and so that's exciting.
Yeah.
And working with Carol in designing, and then implementing, and she started at Granby Junior Senior High School, so, well-received. Yep.
Great. That's great. Thank you.
Doing more with less.
Go Granby.
Go Granby.
So how do we want the timing of the strategic plan to be or the when we finalize it and then share it? We probably want it to be before the town meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm. Great.
Is there anything else that we need to do then to expedite it?
Just the um uh like I said, the measurable outcomes, that's on our agenda for Thursday with the leadership team. Um and uh the timeline and we might be able to pull back the timeline and just do the objectives and then get that out to the community because the timeline is really um flexible anyway. Um it's just basically a Gantt chart where we lay out, you know, all of the tasks and when they get accomplished. So that's probably not as um critical as getting the document out.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Any questions? FY eighteen budget.
Uh Mark won't be here tonight. He's here next uh on the nineteenth.
Okay.
So we'll share all of uh FY eighteen. Um.
How about nineteen?
Um.
We have a lot of options.
I have a document for you to review. What's that?
We have a lot of options.
We have a lot. We have plenty of options. Um I did want to outline um so that we could post on the webpage the meeting dates. Um so this is, these are the proposed dates. Um February twenty-six, we already had the superintendent overview, sort of the thirty-thousand-foot view. Um March nineteenth would be um my presentation with Mark um with the details, the trend analysis, um the funding sources, the variances from year to year. Um April second, I'm recommending um a joint meeting with the school committee, select board, and finance um and have asked Chris if that is a good date. Um and so he's forwarded that onto his committees and so hopefully uh that's a good date for us. Um suggesting April twelfth as the school committee public hearing for the FY nineteen budget, um and then the town meeting vote. Uh the first day of that vote of that meeting is scheduled for May fourteenth and the second is yet to be determined.
Okay.
That I'm aware, so.
Yep.
Um so I would like to uh post that so people know um as we spoke um to really try and communicate clearly uh, you know, when people can uh become engaged in the process um and get information um about uh the FY nineteen budget.
Great. Um is there a way to create a budget tab or something like that in on the district side? So
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
It's easier to find. Cool. Then we can put everything, all the materials related to budgets, past, current, whatever we can there.
Right. And it would be historical. Yes, yep.
Yep, cool. Cuz I know that some folks are, you know, looking for
They are and and I I do apologize. Um you know, we thought that they were there and when we migrated information, um apparently my page is not there anymore.
Well, actually, that one I thought was there to begin with. I looked for it and yeah.
I, yes, yeah. So um I'm the webmaster. I might have, I might have done it. So that might have been me um when I made a mistake and, you know, the webpage didn't go exactly as I planned. I might have gone back too many versions. Uh so it was probably me, but um we'll get that fixed.
Yeah.
With this approved, then um that would be my, really my work of this week is to clean up that
Yeah.
um so that we are articulating um not only this year's budget process and our documents and our proposals and our presentations, but um last year's as well, at least what I have.
Okay.
We 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 also wanted to make sure that we we sent out like a lot of communication well in advance
Yes.
for each one of these, right? Especially the joint, the joint meeting. I think we wanted to make a strong, strong presence, right?
Yep, definitely. Yeah, um last year I presented to the music patrons, um uh to the PTO, um presented before the um open uh the spring conferences. Uh so those certainly are all opportunities, but you know, if there are community organizations out there that would like me to come and present the school department budget, I'd be happy to. Um and at least even just to talk and listen. Um if people have ideas or uh questions, concerns, thoughts about the budget, um I'd be happy to listen.
Yeah, and and we would be happy to be there.
Yep.
You know, if we're available, that would be, that would be great.
Cheryl, would it be appropriate for you to do um a presentation before open house at either school?
Yep.
Cause you kinda have a captive audience then.
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought I thought you did that last year.
I did.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, it was actually, I thought, well-received. Um yeah, the people, um it was uh it's informative for people to understand how we budget um and the position that we're in um so that they can understand uh some of the constraint, but some of the creativity that we're that we are using to make sure that students are receiving uh the resources they need to be successful.
Um would it be helpful to do like um almost like a mock Q and A with uh GCAM?
Mm-hmm.
You know, like a
Yeah.
Like on my superintendent TV.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
And then we can uh get it, you know, recorded and um explain the whole process and how it works and what the problem is and what's going on. And that way there, we can share that all over social media and make sure that story is told to the people who aren't coming to open houses and.
We can solicit questions too, if we're gonna do that. So we can ask them, hey, what are your questions? Take those questions and do a program.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
It's a good idea. Let's do it.
Do it. Um I started putting s- a little guidelines for district budget content and communication. So what we should include in there and how we should communicate. I I love the fact that there's a calendar now, but how we, you know, how we go out and let folks know.
Mm-hmm.
Uh like using social media and posting on different uh parts of the uh website um which committees we should reach out to and share. And I I have a little section on the content, what type what uh levels of detail based on what we heard.
Mm-hmm.
So we ha- we'll look at two, three years budget, including the current year, right? Um but we never see actuals. I don't know whether they are available anywhere. At least, you know, for one or two years, if we can have the actuals, we can see how things align, whether or not. And that was a whole conversation that we've been having for a while.
Right.
Budgeting, you know, as um I was told many years ago when I was doing forecasting and 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 uh budgeting, uh forecasting especially is sixty percent art at best uh and forty percent science. So things get missed at times. Or we forecast something based on some assumptions, but it doesn't really stick. So we'd like to find out wh- what are those things? You know, we we put hundred dollars here, we spent so much, then we had to take that and put it somewhere else because we could. It would be good to see what those variances are and and what's happening with that.
So we, yep. So in um my work with Mark, uh we have created a uh FY seventeen actual uh to the F-FY eighteen budget. Um we can go back further than that if that's the school uh committee's request. Um but you will see over time the variance and um typically, you know, basically the narrative is that um if we don't receive like last year the override, then um the budgeted um to FY nineteen um is problematic. Uh you know, because now we're having to go back and cut. Um and uh it looks like we're asking for a lot when we've actually been asking for it for many years and it's not in the base of the budget. So we're having to ask for the same amount of funds. Um and so trying to be, you know, trying to explain that um so that people understand uh declining enrollment is is a factor in declining revenue, but it's also the fact that every time we're on town meeting floor and have extra expend uh extra appropriation to us, it's never in the base of the budget. So we have to ask for that year after year after year.
Right.
Um and I'm not sure people know that or understand that.
Well, you know, I I guess there is no better way of showing the numbers where we have those gaps. So what I what I'm thinking about when I say actuals versus uh forecast, if we forecast something, uh and then um we, for whatever reason, had to overspend that
Mm-hmm.
unexpected things and whatever it is, we have to take money from elsewhere
Right.
and put it there. Doesn't mean that that money wasn't needed. That means we are foregoing some service that was there. And now we say, you know, we're not gonna have as much.
Right.
Uh right?
Exactly.
So to be able to show that type of that type of constraint in our budget
Mm-hmm.
and why, you know, we can't forever forego that service that we, you know, last year said, okay, let's hold off on this one and, you know, spend the money uh on the other short uh line item. It would be great to put that picture in front of everyone
Mm-hmm.
to the extent that we could. Of course, again, one thing that I don't know, DESI codes are confusing to me because I know that the municipal codes and the DESI codes don't always match.
Correct.
But if we are, if our expense codes are the same as our uh codes that we use when we're budgeting,
Mm-hmm.
hopefully there's a way to really put them in the same bucket and compare apples to apples.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, cool.
And that has been missing. Um it wasn't part of um certainly where I went last year um in developing FY eighteen. But clearly after speaking with finance and that joint meeting, um that was a major component of what they were looking for. Um and I think they call it a line item budget, but I think my understanding is that was, that's what they're looking for. And then, you know, the um I forget what I was gonna say. Sorry. There's a second part, um but I can't remember it right now.
Yeah. And we'll we have to clarify terminology too, to make sure that we are all speaking the same language.
Right.
Uh cuz line item budget may mean different things and it does mean different things in different settings. Uh but so long as we understand that that's gonna be one of the things that's gonna help
Yes.
our conversation, that's that's great.
So the second part was measurable outcomes. You know, so if if this is what we're saying we need to be effective, how are we measuring our effectiveness? And so I think um being able to align where we're spending resources with measurable outcomes. So let's say um the school committee has um designated funding for peace builders. Are we noticing a decline in bullying um uh write-ups of students, you know, a de- a decline in discipline ref- office referrals of students? So those are the things that we have to show that because we spent money, the result was um something that we anticipated, um which was an improvement in the instructional program, so.
Yeah, great.
One other question was can we put the rest of the line in and put a question, right? And it seems like you're about to do that or?
Yep. Yep. So FY eighteen will go up um if not tomorrow, maybe during this maybe snow day on Wednesday if we have access.
Alright. That's great. Thank you Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Anything else on uh nineteen?
Nope, just that if you're alright with that, then I will move forward and post it.
Yes, please.
Create the space on webpage.
Yeah, um I think it's 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 great practice to have all those dates in front of everyone with advanced notice so that, you know, if anybody wants to be part of the conversation, it can be. Cool. Uh do you have a superintendent's report today?
I do. Uh so we have some pictures for you. Um we are in the new building at East Meadow. Um thanks to everyone in the community who pitched in. We actually even had police officers there for us and we have pictures of them. They were very excited. Um it was wonderful to see the teachers moving uh their belongings and helping their colleagues. Um the movers were actually like in a quandary about what to do uh because the teachers took such ownership over it. Um but they found things that they um needed to do uh that we couldn't move like desks and stuff, so. Um uh students and staff are settling in uh to the new building and the remodeling has begun uh in the old East Meadow. Um it's hard to believe that all of our elementary students and staff will be in one school in September. I'm very excited for that. Uh thank you to the strategic planning task force. The first draft of the plan has been reviewed and revised. Our next steps are to create measurable outcomes and our three-year timeline. Uh we look forward to sharing this document with school committee and the public as soon as it's ready. Um this week, we are participating in a targeted district review with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And the focus of our review is leadership and governance, human resources, professional development, and fiscal and asset management. And we look forward to receiving and sharing the report with you when it's complete.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Cheryl?
Oh, and congratulations to the girls uh who made it to the quarterfinals um in basketball and were just a little bit short, um no pun intended, um in the score and we did lose. Um so that was um congratulations to them for making it that far.
Yes.
And don't forget to come to the music theater. March.
Fifteen sixteen seventeen.
March fifteen sixteen seventeen, seven P M.
Seven P M, except on
Saturday, there's also two P M.
But no Sunday show because?
St. Patrick's Day parade.
Excellent.
Cool.
Feel like you're in elementary school. Yeah, exactly.
Do you have anything from the collaborative? Okay. Alright, um school building committee did not meet
Nope.
since our last meeting. And policy subcommittee?
Oh, we were supposed to meet last week.
We were?
Right?
Yes.
It's okay.
Alright.
So we'll reschedule.
Yeah, we're gonna have to talk to the chair.
Yeah, this is a disaster.
Cool. Okay. Um we do have a um executive session today, so this is basically all we had for the open session. Did we miss anything? Is there anything that we we would like to add to our next meeting that you know of?
Well, I asked about Chartwell's. That was a piece that I wanted.
I'll br- I'll send that on to.
And that thing that I was talking about, the content and communication, I'm gonna send it. I'm gonna put it in the uh folder for next meeting.
Okay.
Maybe we can add it to the agenda next time. Okay, bearing none. We will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Part A three to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Is there a roll call, please?
Jennifer Curran, aye.
Emery Arvin, aye.
Yeah, Mike Simpson, aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.